Good evening, guests and residents of Hudsonville. I am Mayor Mark Northrup. Welcome to the Hudsonville City Commission dated November 9th, 2021. We have a busy agenda here tonight, and we hope to keep it succinct and on time. First, I'd like to call us to order by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There'll be a moment of silence led by Commissioner Tobin.
Shall we pray? Father, tonight we've come before you thankful for the work you've done here in Hudsonville, thankful for the many blessings you've surrounded this community with. We offer you a special thanks, Father, for the efforts from our local police officers and firefighters. The fact that they're willing to step into harms way on our behalf each day, we're thankful for that. Thank you for the professional leadership exemplified in this city, leadership in our schools, our churches, and our city offices. You've prepared each person for that role, and we thank you for putting them in those positions, preparing the city for what lies ahead. As we're in this room tonight, Lord, we're about to discuss matters placed before us. May we be filled with a small portion of your wisdom that we may correctly determine how we may come alongside and support the residents and businesses in this community. Father, may our efforts tonight bring you joy. Amen.
Thank you, Tobin. Prior to us beginning the agenda tonight, we have a certain order of business that needs to be addressed. First and foremost, we have to give a proclamation to a departing City Commissioner, Gary Rhetoric. Gary and I have been a pleasure serving together on this dais for eight years and have seen many things come and go, but nothing compared to his six decades, 42 years, 42 continuous years of serving the city. Truthfully, I have to be a little selfish. Two years ago, I asked you to run again. I knew you were thinking about stepping down, but that was selfish in saying, Gary, I'd like to have you one more term. And I appreciate you hanging on, giving me all that paternal mentoring and guidance that allowed for me to be a successful mayor and to lead the city in your capacity as Commissioner. He will be missed. Having said that, there's a proclamation that the City Commission will be honoring him tonight, honoring Mr. Gary Rhetoric upon his retirement from a long and distinguished career in public service to the City of Hudsonville, whereas Mr. Rhetoric was first appointed to the Hudsonville Planning Commission on February 7th, 1979, dutifully serving in this capacity for a combined total of 42 years, whereas Mr. Rhetoric was first elected to the Hudsonville City Commission on December 10th, 1985, dutifully serving in this capacity for a combined total of 28 years, whereas Mr. Rhetoric has been instrumental in guiding the thoughtful and controlled growth of the city over the last four decades, including but not limited to the expansion of the city's south jurisdictional limit through annexation, and whereas Mr. Rhetoric continuously strived to uphold high moral standards and values for the betterment of the colleagues in the city, and whereas Mr. Rhetoric continuously embodied the principles of the city's mission statement, specifically by protecting the lives and property of our citizens, by providing for responsible and orderly growth, and by promoting the beliefs and convictions, economic opportunities, and quality of life for all its residents. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hudsonville City Commission does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Rhetoric for his steadfast dedication and commitment to the City of Hudsonville and shall recognize his many contributions to this community by permanently affixing his name to the Hudsonville Fountain of Honor.
Wonderful.
In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to seal the City of Hudsonville to be affixed this ninth day of November, 2021. God bless you and Shirley. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Having said that, we are going to take a...
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
I'm just reflecting on everything and so thankful that I've had this privilege, and it's been an honor to do it.
Thank you, Gary. Before we start the agenda, we're going to take just a brief intermission here to step off the dais, to issue the oath of office to our two returning Commissioners and two new Commissioners. It'll be an opportunity for us to break a cake, have a cup of coffee, probably roughly five minutes after that, then we'll formally seat the new Commissioner for the next year. So we'll just take a few minutes. Thank you.
So I'm going to have you raise your hand. I do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Commissioner in and for the City of Hudsonville, County of Ottawa, and State of Michigan according to best of my abilities. So help me God.
I can move.
Have you guys sign this?
Thank you. 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 Thank you.[556.53][556.53][S01. Thank you.[558.53][558.53][S01. Thank you.[560.53][560.53][S01. Thank you.[562.53][562.53][S01. Thank you.[564.53][564.53][S01. Thank you.[566.53][566.53][S01. Thank you.[568.53][568.53][S01. Thank you.[570.53][570.53][S01. Thank you.[572.53][572.53][S01. Thank you.[574.53][574.53][S01. Thank you.[576.53][576.53][S01. Thank you.[578.53][578.53][S01. Thank you.[580.53][580.53][S01. Thank you.[582.53][582.53][S01. Thank you.[584.53][584.53][S01. Thank you.[586.53][586.53][S01. Thank you.[588.53][588.53][S01. Thank you.[590.53][590.53][S01. Thank you.[592.53][592.53][S01. Thank you.[594.53][594.53][S01. Thank you.[596.53][596.53][S01. Thank you.[598.53][598.53][S01. Thank you.[600.53][600.53][S01. Thank you.[602.53][602.53][S01. Thank you.[604.53][604.53][S01. Thank you.[606.53][606.53][S01. Thank you.[608.53][608.53][S01. Thank you.[610.53][610.53][S01. Thank you.[612.53][612.53][S01. Thank you.[614.53][614.53][S01. Thank you.[616.53][616.53][S01. Thank you.[618.53][618.53][S01. Thank you.[620.53][620.53][S01. Thank you.[622.53][622.53][S01. Thank you.[624.53][624.53][S01. Thank you.[626.53][626.53][S01. Thank you.[628.53][628.53][S01. Thank you.[630.53][630.53][S01. Thank you.[632.53][632.53][S01. Thank you.[634.53][634.53][S01. Thank you.[636.53][636.53][S01. Thank you.[638.53][638.53][S01. Thank you.[640.53][640.53][S01. Thank you.[642.53][642.53][S01. Thank you.[644.53][644.53][S01. Thank you.[646.53][646.53][S01. Thank you.[648.53][648.53][S01. Thank you.[650.53][650.53][S01. Thank you.[652.53][652.53][S01. Thank you.[654.53][654.53][S01. Thank you.[656.53][656.53][S01. Thank you.[658.53][658.53][S01. Thank you.[660.53][660.53][S01. Thank you.[662.53][662.53][S01. Thank you.[664.53][664.53][S01. Thank you.[666.53][666.53][S01. Thank you.[668.53][668.53][S01. Thank you.[670.53][670.53][S01. Thank you.[672.53][672.53][S01. Thank you.[674.53][674.53][S01. Thank you.[676.53][676.53][S01. Thank you.[678.53][678.53][S01. Thank you.[680.53][680.53][S01. Thank you.[682.53][682.53][S01. Thank you.[684.53][684.53][S01. Thank you.[686.53][686.53][S01. Thank you.[688.53][688.53][S01. Thank you.[690.53][690.53][S01. Thank you.[692.53][692.53][S01. Thank you.[694.53][694.53][S01. Thank you.[696.53][696.53][S01. Thank you.[698.53][698.53][S01. Thank you.[700.53][700.53][S01. Thank you.[702.53][702.53][S01. Thank you.[704.53][704.53][S01. Thank you.[706.53][706.53][S01. Thank you.[708.53][708.53][S01. Thank you.[710.53][710.53][S01. Thank you.[712.53][712.53][S01. Thank you.[714.53][714.53][S01. Thank you.[716.53][716.53][S01. Thank you.[718.53][718.53][S01. Thank you.[720.53][720.53][S01. Thank you.[722.53][722.53][S01. Thank you.[724.53][724.53][S01. Thank you.[726.53][726.53][S01. Thank you.[728.53][728.53][S01. Thank you.[730.53][730.53][S01. Thank you.[732.53][732.53][S01. Thank you.[734.53][734.53][S01. Thank you.[736.53][736.53][S01. Thank you.[738.53][738.53][S01. Thank you.[740.53][740.53][S01. Thank you.[742.53][742.53][S01. Thank you.[744.53][744.53][S01. Thank you.[746.53][746.53][S01. Thank you.[748.53][748.53][S01. Thank you.[750.53][750.53][S01. Thank you.[752.53][752.53][S01. Thank you.[754.53][754.53][S01. Thank you.[756.53][756.53][S01. Thank you.[758.53][758.53][S01. Thank you.[760.53][760.53][S01. Thank you.[762.53][762.53][S01. Thank you.[764.53][764.53][S01. Thank you.[766.53][766.53][S01. Thank you.[768.53][768.53][S01. Thank you.[770.53][770.53][S01. Thank you.[772.53][772.53][S01. Thank you.[774.53][774.53][S01. Thank you.[776.53][776.53][S01. Thank you.[778.53][778.53][S01. Thank you.[780.53][780.53][S01. Thank you.[782.53][782.53][S01. Thank you.[784.53][784.53][S01. Thank you.[786.53][786.53][S01. Thank you.[788.53][788.53][S01. Thank you.[790.53][790.53][S01. Thank you.[792.53][792.53][S01. Thank you.[794.53][794.53][S01. Thank you.[796.53][796.53][S01. Thank you.[798.53][798.53][S01. Thank you.[800.53][800.53][S01. Thank you.[802.53][802.53][S01. Thank you.[804.53][804.53][S01. Thank you.[806.53][806.53][S01. Thank you.[808.53][808.53][S01. Thank you.[810.53][810.53][S01. Thank you.[812.53][812.53][S01. Thank you.[814.53][814.53][S01. Thank you.[816.53][816.53][S01. Thank you.[818.53][818.53][S01. Thank you.[820.53][820.53][S01. Thank you.[822.53][822.53][S01. Thank you.[824.53][824.53][S01. Thank you.[826.53][826.53][S01. Thank you.[828.53][828.53][S01. Thank you.[830.53][830.53][S01. Thank you.[832.53][832.53][S01. Thank you.[834.53][834.53][S01. Thank you.[836.53][836.53][S01. Thank you.[838.53][838.53][S01. Thank you.[840.53][840.53][S01. Thank you.[842.53][842.53][S01. Thank you.[844.53][844.53][S01. Thank you.[846.53][846.53][S01. Thank you.[848.53][848.53][S01. Thank you.[850.53][850.53][S01. Thank you.[852.53][852.53][S01. Thank you.[854.53][854.53][S01. Thank you.[856.53][856.53][S01. Thank you.[858.53][858.53][S01. Thank you.[860.53][860.53][S01. Thank you.[862.53][862.53][S01. Thank you.[864.53][864.53][S01. Thank you.[866.53][866.53][S01. Thank you.[868.53][868.53][S01. Thank you.[870.53][870.53][S01. Thank you.[872.53][872.53][S01. Thank you.[874.53][874.53][S01. Thank you.[876.53][876.53][S01. Thank you.[878.53][878.53][S01. Thank you.[880.53][880.53][S01. Thank you.[882.53][882.53][S01. Thank you.[884.53][884.53][S01. Thank you.[886.53][886.53][S01. Thank you.[888.53][888.53][S01. Thank you.[890.53][890.53][S01. Thank you.[892.53][892.53][S01. Thank you.[894.53][894.53][S01. Thank you.[896.53][896.53][S01. Thank you.[898.53][898.53][S01. Thank you.[900.53][900.53][S01. Thank you.[902.53][902.53][S01. Thank you.[904.53][904.53][S01. Thank you.[906.53][906.53][S01. Thank you.[908.53][908.53][S01. Thank you.[910.53][910.53][S01. Thank you.[912.53][912.53][S01. Thank you.[914.53][914.53][S01. Thank you.[916.53][916.53][S01. Thank you.[918.53][918.53][S01. Thank you.[920.53][920.53][S01. Thank you.[922.53][922.53][S01. Thank you.[924.53][924.53][S01. Thank you.[926.53][926.53][S01. Thank you.[928.53][928.53][S01. Thank you.[930.53][930.53][S01. Thank you.[932.53][932.53][S01. Thank you.[934.53][934.53][S01. Thank you.[936.53][936.53][S01. Thank you.[938.53][938.53][S01. Thank you.[940.53][940.53][S01. Thank you.[942.53][942.53][S01. Thank you.[944.53][944.53][S01. Thank you.[946.53][946.53][S01. Thank you.[948.53][948.53][S01. Thank you.[950.53][950.53][S01. Thank you.[952.53][952.53][S01. Thank you.[954.53][954.53][S01. Thank you.[956.53][956.53][S01. Thank you.[958.53][958.53][S01. Thank you.[960.53][960.53][S01. Thank you.[962.53][962.53][S01. Thank you.[964.53][964.53][S01. Thank you.[966.53][966.53][S01. Thank you.[968.53][968.53][S01. Thank you.[970.53][970.53][S01. Thank you.[972.53][972.53][S01. Thank you.[974.53][974.53][S01. Thank you.[976.53][976.53][S01. Thank you.[978.53][978.53][S01. Thank you.[980.53][980.53][S01. Thank you.[982.53][982.53][S01. Thank you.[984.53][984.53][S01. Thank you.[986.53][986.53][S01. Thank you.[988.53][988.53][S01. Thank you.[990.53][990.53][S01. Thank you.[992.53][992.53][S01. Thank you.[994.53][994.53][S01. Thank you.[996.53][996.53][S01. Thank you.[998.53][998.53][S01. Thank you.[1000.53][1000.53][S01. Thank you.[1002.53][1002.53][S01. Thank you.[1004.53][1004.53][S01. Thank you.[1006.53][1006.53][S01. Thank you.[1008.53][1008.53][S01. Thank you.[1010.53][1010.53][S01. Thank you.[1012.53][1012.53][S01. Thank you.[1014.53][1014.53][S01. Thank you.[1016.53][1016.53][S01. Thank you.[1018.53][1018.53][S01. Thank you.[1020.53][1020.53][S01. Thank you.[1022.53][1022.53][S01. Thank you.[1024.53][1024.53][S01. Thank you.[1026.53][1026.53][S01. Thank you.[1028.53][1028.53][S01. Thank you.[1030.53][1030.53][S01. Thank you.[1032.53][1032.53][S01. Thank you.[1034.53][1034.53][S01. Thank you.[1036.53][1036.53][S01. Thank you.[1038.53][1038.53][S01. Thank you.[1040.53][1040.53][S01. Thank you.[1042.53][1042.53][S01. Thank you.[1044.53][1044.53][S01. Thank you.[1046.53][1046.53][S01. Thank you.[1048.53][1048.53][S01. Thank you.[1050.53][1050.53][S01. Thank you.[1052.53][1052.53][S01. Thank you.[1054.53][1054.53][S01. Thank you.[1056.53][1056.53][S01. Thank you.[1058.53][1058.53][S01. Thank you.[1060.53][1060.53][S01. Thank you.[1062.53][1062.53][S01. Thank you.[1064.53][1064.53][S01. Thank you.[1066.53][1066.53][S01. Thank you.[1068.53][1068.53][S01. Thank you.[1070.53][1070.53][S01. Thank you.[1072.53][1072.53][S01. Thank you.[1074.53][1074.53][S01. Thank you.[1076.53][1076.53][S01. Thank you.[1078.53][1078.53][S01. Thank you.[1080.53][1080.53][S01. Thank you.[1082.53][1082.53][S01. Thank you.[1084.53][1084.53][S01. Thank you.[1086.53][1086.53][S01. Thank you.[1088.53][1088.53][S01. Thank you.[1090.53][1090.53][S01. Thank you.[1092.53][1092.53][S01. Thank you.[1094.53][1094.53][S01. Thank you.[1096.53][1096.53][S01. Thank you.[1098.53][1098.53][S01. Thank you.[1100.53][1100.53][S01. Thank you.[1102.53][1102.53][S01. Thank you.[1104.53][1104.53][S01. Thank you.[1106.53][1106.53][S01. Thank you.[1108.53][1108.53][S01. Thank you.[1110.53][1110.53][S01. Thank you.[1112.53][1112.53][S01. Thank you.[1114.53][1114.53][S01. Thank you.[1116.53][1116.53][S01. Thank you.[1118.53][1118.53][S01. Thank you.[1120.53][1120.53][S01. Thank you.[1122.53][1122.53][S01. Thank you.[1124.53][1124.53][S01. Thank you.[1126.53][1126.53][S01. Thank you.[1128.53][1128.53][S01. Thank you.[1130.53][1130.53][S01. Thank you.[1132.53][1132.53][S01. Thank you.[1134.53][1134.53][S01. Thank you.[1136.53][1136.53][S01. Thank you.[1138.53][1138.53][S01. Thank you.[1140.53][1140.53][S01. Thank you.[1142.53][1142.53][S01. Thank you.[1144.53][1144.53][S01. Thank you.[1146.53][1146.53][S01. Thank you.[1148.53][1148.53][S01. Thank you.[1150.53][1150.53][S01. Thank you.[1152.53][1152.53][S01. Thank you.[1154.53][1154.53][S01. Thank you.[1156.53][1156.53][S01. Thank you.[1158.53][1158.53][S01. Thank you.[1160.53][1160.53][S01. Thank you.[1162.53][1162.53][S01. Thank you.[1164.53][1164.53][S01. Thank you.[1166.53][1166.53][S01. Thank you.[1168.53][1168.53][S01. Thank you.[1170.53][1170.53][S01. Thank you.[1172.53][1172.53][S01. Thank you.[1174.53][1174.53][S01. Thank you.[1176.53][1176.53][S01. Thank you.[1178.53][1178.53][S01. Thank you.[1180.53][1180.53][S01. Thank you.[1182.53][1182.53][S01. Thank you.[1184.53][1184.53][S01. Thank you.[1186.53][1186.53][S01. Thank you.[1188.53][1188.53][S01. Thank you.[1190.53][1190.53][S01. Thank you.[1192.53][1192.53][S01. Thank you.[1194.53][1194.53][S01. Thank you.[1196.53][1196.53][S01. Thank you.[1198.53][1198.53][S01. Thank you.[1200.53][1200.53][S01. Thank you.[1202.53][1202.53][S01. Thank you.[1204.53][1204.53][S01. Thank you.[1206.53][1206.53][S01. Thank you.[1208.53][1208.53][S01. Thank you.[1210.53][1210.53][S01. Thank you.[1212.53][1212.53][S01. Thank you.[1214.53][1214.53][S01. Thank you.[1216.53][1216.53][S01. Thank you.[1218.53][1218.53][S01. Thank you.[1220.53][1220.53][S01. Thank you.[1222.53][1222.53][S01. Thank you.[1224.53][1224.53][S01. Thank you.[1226.53][1226.53][S01. Thank you.[1228.53][1228.53][S01. Thank you.[1230.53][1230.53][S01. Thank you.[1232.53][1232.53][S01. Thank you.[1234.53][1234.53][S01. Thank you.[1236.53][1236.53][S01. Thank you.[1238.53][1238.53][S01. Thank you.[1240.53][1240.53][S01. Thank you.[1242.53][1242.53][S01. Thank you.[1244.53][1244.53][S01. Thank you.[1246.53][1246.53][S01. Thank you.[1248.53][1248.53][S01. Thank you.[1250.53][1250.53][S01. Thank you.[1252.53][1252.53][S01. Thank you.[1254.53][1254.53][S01. Thank you.[1256.53][1256.53][S01. Thank you.[1258.53][1258.53][S01. Thank you.[1260.53][1260.53][S01. Thank you.[1262.53][1262.53][S01. Thank you.[1264.53][1264.53][S01. Thank you.[1266.53][1266.53][S01. Thank you.[1268.53][1268.53][S01. Thank you.[1270.53][1270.53][S01. Thank you.[1272.53][1272.53][S01. Thank you.[1274.53][1274.53][S01. Thank you.[1276.53][1276.53][S01. Thank you.[1278.53][1278.53][S01. Thank you.[1280.53][1280.53][S01. Thank you.[1282.53][1282.53][S01. Thank you.[1284.53][1284.53][S01. Thank you.[1286.53][1286.53][S01. Thank you.[1288.53][1288.53][S01. Thank you.[1290.53][1290.53][S01. Thank you.[1292.53][1292.53][S01. Thank you.[1294.53][1294.53][S01. Thank you.[1296.53][1296.53][S01. Thank you.[1298.53][1298.53][S01. Thank you.[1300.53][1300.53][S01. Thank you.[1302.53][1302.53][S01. Thank you.[1304.53][1304.53][S01. Thank you.[1306.53][1306.53][S01. Thank you.[1308.53][1308.53][S01. Thank you.[1310.53][1310.53][S01. Thank you.[1312.53][1312.53][S01. Thank you.[1314.53][1314.53][S01. Thank you.[1316.53][1316.53][S01. Thank you.[1318.53][1318.53][S01. Thank you.[1320.53][1320.53][S01. Thank you.[1322.53][1322.53][S01. Thank you.[1324.53][1324.53][S01. Thank you.[1326.53][1326.53][S01. Thank you.[1328.53][1328.53][S01. Thank you.[1330.53][1330.53][S01. Thank you.[1332.53][1332.53][S01. Thank you.[1334.53][1334.53][S01. Thank you.[1336.53][1336.53][S01. Thank you.[1338.53][1338.53][S01. Thank you.[1340.53][1340.53][S01. Thank you.[1342.53][1342.53][S01. Thank you.[1344.53][1344.53][S01. Thank you.[1346.53][1346.53][S01. Thank you.[1348.53][1348.53][S01. Thank you.[1350.53][1350.53][S01. Thank you.[1352.53][1352.53][S01. Thank you.[1354.53][1354.53][S01. Thank you.[1356.53][1356.53][S01. Thank you.[1358.53][1358.53][S01. Thank you.[1360.53][1360.53][S01. Thank you.[1362.53][1362.53][S01. Thank you.[1364.53][1364.53][S01. Thank you.[1366.53][1366.53][S01. Thank you.[1368.53][1368.53][S01. Thank you.[1370.53][1370.53][S01. Thank you.[1372.53][1372.53][S01. Thank you.[1374.53][1374.53][S01. Thank you.[1376.53][1376.53][S01. Thank you.[1378.53][1378.53][S01. Thank you.[1380.53][1380.53][S01. Thank you.[1382.53][1382.53][S01. Thank you.[1384.53][1384.53][S01. Thank you.[1386.53][1386.53][S01. Thank you.[1388.53][1388.53][S01. Thank you.[1390.53][1390.53][S01. Thank you.[1392.53][1392.53][S01. Thank you.[1394.53][1394.53][S01. Thank you.[1396.53][1396.53][S01. Thank you.[1398.53][1398.53][S01. Thank you.[1400.53][1400.53][S01. Thank you.[1402.53][1402.53][S01. Thank you.[1404.53][1404.53][S01. Thank you.[1406.53][1406.53][S01. Thank you.[1408.53][1408.53][S01. Thank you.[1410.53][1410.53][S01. Thank you.[1412.53][1412.53][S01. Thank you.[1414.53][1414.53][S01. Thank you.[1416.53][1416.53][S01. Thank you.[1418.53][1418.53][S01. Thank you.[1420.53][1420.53][S01. Thank you.[1422.53][1422.53][S01. Thank you.[1424.53][1424.53][S01. Thank you.[1426.53][1426.53][S01. Thank you.[1428.53][1428.53][S01. Thank you.[1430.53][1430.53][S01. Thank you.[1432.53][1432.53][S01. Thank you.[1434.53][1434.53][S01. Thank you.[1436.53][1436.53][S01. Thank you.[1438.53][1438.53][S01. Thank you.[1440.53][1440.53][S01. Thank you.[1442.53][1442.53][S01. Thank you.[1444.53][1444.53][S01. Thank you.[1446.53][1446.53][S01. Thank you.[1448.53][1448.53][S01. Thank you.[1450.53][1450.53][S01. Thank you.[1452.53][1452.53][S01. Thank you.[1454.53][1454.53][S01. Thank you.[1456.53][1456.53][S01. Thank you.[1458.53][1458.53][S01. Thank you.[1460.53][1460.53][S01. Thank you.[1462.53][1462.53][S01. Thank you.[1464.53][1464.53][S01. Thank you.[1466.53][1466.53][S01. Thank you.[1468.53][1468.53][S01. Thank you.[1470.53][1470.53][S01. Thank you.[1472.53][1472.53][S01. Thank you.[1474.53][1474.53][S01. Thank you.[1476.53][1476.53][S01. Thank you.[1478.53][1478.53][S01. Thank you.[1480.53][1480.53][S01. Thank you.[1482.53][1482.53][S01. Thank you.[1484.53][1484.53][S01. Thank you.[1486.53][1486.53][S01. Thank you.[1488.53][1488.53][S01. Thank you.[1490.53][1490.53][S01. Thank you.[1492.53][1492.53][S01. Thank you.[1494.53][1494.53][S01. Thank you.[1496.53][1496.53][S01. Thank you.[1498.53][1498.53][S01. Thank you.[1500.53][1500.53][S01. Thank you.[1502.53][1502.53][S01. Thank you.[1504.53][1504.53][S01. Thank you.[1506.53][1506.53][S01. Thank you.[1508.53][1508.53][S01. Thank you.[1510.53][1510.53][S01. Thank you.[1512.53][1512.53][S01. Thank you.[1514.53][1514.53][S01. Thank you.[1516.53][1516.53][S01. Thank you.[1518.53][1518.53][S01. Thank you.[1520.53][1520.53][S01. Thank you.[1522.53][1522.53][S01. Thank you.[1524.53][1524.53][S01. Thank you.[1526.53][1526.53][S01. Thank you.[1528.53][1528.53][S01. Thank you.[1530.53][1530.53][S01. Thank you.[1532.53][1532.53][S01. Thank you.[1534.53][1534.53][S01. Thank you.[1536.53][1536.53][S01. Thank you.[1538.53][1538.53][S01. Thank you.[1540.53][1540.53][S01. Thank you.[1542.53][1542.53][S01. Thank you.[1544.53][1544.53][S01. Thank you.[1546.53][1546.53][S01. Thank you.[1548.53][1548.53][S01. Thank you.[1550.53][1550.53][S01. Thank you.[1552.53][1552.53][S01. Thank you.[1554.53][1554.53][S01. Thank you.[1556.53][1556.53][S01. Thank you.[1558.53][1558.53][S01. Thank you.[1560.53][1560.53][S01. Thank you.[1562.53][1562.53][S01. Thank you.[1564.53][1564.53][S01. Thank you.[1566.53][1566.53][S01. Thank you.[1568.53][1568.53][S01. Thank you.[1570.53][1570.53][S01. Thank you.[1572.53][1572.53][S01. Thank you.[1574.53][1574.53][S01. Thank you.[1576.53][1576.53][S01. Thank you.[1578.53][1578.53][S01. Thank you.[1580.53][1580.53][S01. Thank you.[1582.53][1582.53][S01. Thank you.[1584.53][1584.53][S01. Thank you.[1586.53][1586.53][S01. Thank you.[1588.53][1588.53][S01. Thank you.[1590.53][1590.53][S01. Thank you.[1592.53][1592.53][S01. Thank you.[1594.53][1594.53][S01. Thank you.[1596.53][1596.53][S01. Thank you.[1598.53][1598.53][S01. Thank you.[1600.53][1600.53][S01. Thank you.[1602.53][1602.53][S01. Thank you.[1604.53][1604.53][S01. Thank you.[1606.53][1606.53][S01. Thank you.[1608.53][1608.53][S01. Thank you.[1610.53][1610.53][S01. Thank you.[1612.53][1612.53][S01. Thank you.[1614.53][1614.53][S01. Thank you.[1616.53][1616.53][S01. Thank you.[1618.53][1618.53][S01. Thank you.[1620.53][1620.53][S01. Thank you.[1622.53][1622.53][S01. Thank you.[1624.53][1624.53][S01. Thank you.[1626.53][1626.53][S01. Thank you.[1628.53][1628.53][S01. Thank you.[1630.53][1630.53][S01. Thank you.[1632.53][1632.53][S01. Thank you.[1634.53][1634.53][S01. Thank you.[1636.53][1636.53][S01. Thank you.[1638.53][1638.53][S01. Thank you.[1640.53]
Uh, we will, uh, postpone a motion for one month to allow the city commission a li- little bit more time to fully understand these, uh, these motions. Having said that, the, uh, Joe Bush is going to address us concerning these. Uh, they are, it's a rather complex issue. And, uh, I spoke at length to Joe today and Patrick, and I think it's important that we just get a little more time to study it. The implications from the environmental side, but also the financial side, and who really owns all this. So go ahead, Joe.
All right, thanks, Mayor. And, uh, congratulations to the council people who, uh, got reelections, or re-elected and to the new ones by the city council. Again, I'm Joe Bush, Water Resources Commissioner, also known as the Drain Commissioner. Back in twenty twelve when I was campaigning, and then when I won the election, I asked the, uh, the Florida Commissioners. I asked the Board of Commissioners to, uh, change the name from Drain Commissioner to Water Resources Commissioner according to state law or drain code. Ottawa County fell under that, um, discretion and changed the name with their criteria. So we met that and the board passed a resolution to change the name. Muskegon has done the same since then. I think Muskegon did hers last year and changed it from Drain Commissioner to Water Resources Commissioner. So I'm happy to serve. I'm one of your, for you that don't know, I'm one of the countywide electives. Just the sheriff, the clerk, commissioner of deeds, and, um, the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff myself. So we're the countywide electives. And, um, I was asked tonight to come and just kind of give a description of what's going on out in this area. Can we turn this on? Or does that not work?
We're having some issues with the camera. Could you potentially, Joe, put up his graphics that he can at least reference by description?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, if you did that, that'd be good.
That's good, everybody could see it, kind of. So what I have in the yellow is what we call a drain district. And that means that's the assessment district, also the watershed. So anything in the yellow, uh, is actually flowing to a direction that has an outlet. And back in twenty fifteen, it was brought to my attention with your previous, uh, BPW director, Dutch. He said, hey, there's a problem here, uh, which everybody's familiar with Highland Drive, McDonald's is down the corner. It's across the street from Todd Windsor. There is a, uh, issue over there with a broken pipe on the outlets. I don't know if you have a picture of Highland Drive? Some of the pictures that I, for the packets, if you could kind of scan through that. But anyway, while I'm talking, I believe that's the other one. So there's a few maps, but there's also a picture in the packet that shows that particular outlet.
Joe, can you go over the pictures of the outlet?
Oh, yes.
That he's referring to?
Sorry. There it is, right there. And you can see the erosion and you can kind of see the, there's a couple of pictures in the packet. This is the one that really shows the devastation of. That pipe is actually attached to the one that's in the ground.
Where is it on that map?
It's right here. I got it circled in the red circle. So it's on the outlet. So technically, everything in blue is going to that outlet, which is right there, which is right there on your, on your screen.
Behind Todd Windsor's?
No, nope, it's on the north side.
On the north?
Across the street. So if you go over there today, um, that's what you'll find, even worse. These pictures were from twenty fifteen. So it's only gotten worse, but it doesn't really go anywhere. It kind of stays in the webbin area, which is getting impacted. And it's kind of settling there, so it's not really getting downstream. But it got to my attention back in twenty fifteen. Patrick has been out there. Dutch brought it to my attention. Hey, this is what we call an orphan drain. The city doesn't own it. Uh, the county doesn't own it. DNR, DEQ, or EGO, nobody really owns that. It's just called an orphan drain. It was installed way back, probably in the seventies. And of course, you put a storm sewer in. I think somebody might have been here at that time. Maybe, we won't mention any names. Did you put this in? So anyway, it got put in and it's not under the Water Resources and Drain Commissioners jurisdiction or the city. Uh, but it's city water, city streets, and it's also public water going into a utility, which is exiting here, which has a problem. One of the ways to fix that is for me to get a petition, which is through drain code, have a boarding determination, which we've had a few of those in the city or since I've been elected. Um, and they always work out well. And then we, we form a drain district. This is a legal body and this is what actually gets assessed to fix that problem. So that's one of them. This is the Highland Drive one. Um, and, you know, we had a motion on the table and all that. We don't need that currently. I think it's good for the new members, um, maybe to even go see it. I know David, Nitre and I, we go back, way back and do a lot of projects.
We walked a few drains together.
Yeah, we walked a few drains together and talked about a lot of drains in the past. But anyway, this is just one of them. So is there any questions on this one particularly?
So if we went out there tonight, would we need to have muck boots and?
You could stand from the top and, no. No, you could see from the top. You could probably walk down right now before we get four inches of rain and you can probably get down there.
How far is the drought from Great Mountain?
Oh, it's probably a good ten, fifteen feet, maybe.
Oh, and how far is it from the apartments that are just to the west?
Quite a ways. They're, they're not impacting. It would be, it'd be to the east.
Is there a big, a safety issue?
Oh, no, it's not a safety issue. Not at this time. Even years later, it's not a safety issue. My inspector was out there, took some more pictures for me. The only part that's gotten worse is working its way through the, through the road.
Joe, can you explain how that boundary is determined?
And that, yeah, it's just which way the water is falling off either the buildings, the parking lots, um, and where it goes into. So what happens is Spicer Group, uh, who is one of the engineering firms I use, they look at the site plans and they look at all the storm sewers in their parking lots and their buildings. And it's where the water is going. So basically, this is the watershed. So people are like, well, what about this building? Well, most of that water on this half is already going into the drain on the backside. They probably have gutters coming off, uh, to the backside. And then the front gutters are going into a, a storm sewer that's going down into the road. That's typically how they design them anyway.
So part of that board of determination process is a hearing where all of those property owners will be invited in to hear a presentation on why they're in it or why they're not in it and ask questions and?
All for sure.
About understanding that, um, their responsibility for this, uh, is related to where the water flows on their property.
That's correct. We had the same thing with Lord Plastics a few years back. And whether it's the Pinnacle Pond or Pinnacle Drain over by Pinnacle Center, you know, we, we form a assessment district. But the first procedure to do that with drain code is to actually have a petition.
Are they aware there's a problem? Do those property owners probably?
Some of them probably do on this side of the road. But I guarantee you, these people have no idea nor do they care. Their water goes away and it goes somewhere. Typically, they don't know. But the next one, what's that?
They'll be a little bit surprised when they, when they get assessed.
I would say no, because here's the thing. They all will get invited to a public hearing, the board of determination. And then that board of determination, which is nobody in the city council or myself, I appointed three board members for that. And then they will hear the, the issues going on out there. So, and then they'll make a determination, that's why it's called a board of determination, on whether it's necessary to move forward with a project to fix it or they can say, no, we don't see a necessity, which it doesn't bother me either way. It's whatever they determine.
And, and at least the ones I've been at, they've always asked the city for our opinion on it.
Absolutely.
Whether or not we agree that it's necessary. It's always been, yes.
Everybody will have a voice. Everybody gets a mailing. So, uh, MDOT, there's even MDOT in here. So MDOT, you guys, the county, Road Commission, um, and all the property owners, so everybody in this district. And I also, I will send everybody a notice on the border, a notice as well, because there could be a mistake. And we always notice the people on the outside, the neighboring people, just in case that line isn't quite right. Because we do make some technology and we do make mistakes. Something might have changed in the last few years, so everybody gets a notice though.
So how, and here again, I'm sure we'll have more discovery. How, how do you determine what, how much to assess each one of those property owners, including the city, MDOT? Who, who owns what?
I usually determine that and that's by percentages with the formula that we use with factors. So the closer you live to this or, um, basically, we would take it as, okay, as I'm looking at it, the bigger parcels are going to pay the most. If that makes sense.
You can't hit MDOT up for a large portion?
This one here, no. The next one, yes. This one they'll be paying of, which is a fourteen-eight calculation, which really means it's a runoff factor of, uh, MDOT's right away. So whatever, and they, there's a formula for that. So we'll go through that and come up with that number.
So there's a formula that you, you run that through?
Yeah.
Typically, what will the cities assess?
So typically, it's twenty-five percent. And that's historic across every city and every township I deal with. It's twenty-five percent based on health and welfare, um, and safety of, of the city. And plus, you got city streets, might be a little higher than this one, because we run off the factors of the street runoff. Which your, we can always run that through Fleas and Vanderbrink. I think Fleas is your city engineer. We can always run that. They'll probably check it for us, just to have somebody do that across your eye, or not your eye, across your T for us.
Right.
So it's just not me. I like somebody checking it. Because the road commission will check ours, what their engineers do when we do assessment through the city, or, uh, the road commission. So usually, it's Fleas and Vanderbrink would look at our numbers and go, yep, that's right. It's a pretty simple math for us guys who do this. They look at it and go, oh, yeah, this is how much street right away, how much runoff. There's a formula, plug in the numbers and then we'll tell you what our percentage, what your percentage would be.
So, and here again, this is something that we don't ever any budget for.
And this wouldn't even be till the twenty, by the time you do the boarding determination and do all the drain code stuff, um, you're probably looking at the next year's budget.
And you threw out a couple of numbers and each one of these would be about a hundred thousand each?
I would say high side. I'm going to be on the high side, seventy-five to be safe. Because once you get into these, sometimes you'll find out when you invite everybody coming, there's more problems than what we knew about. Because then everybody's coming with a problem. Like, oh, yeah, by the way, this is wrong too, or this is, I'm flooding. There could be somebody, there could be somebody flooding downstream.
Yeah.
So, so I would say seventy-five for each one of these. And they're pretty similar, pretty, well, picture's not, but pretty similar situation. Just infrastructure.
Forty thousand maybe with the city piece on these two?
Yeah, based on, yeah, as Joe said, it might be more than twenty-five percent if we have street right away in there, which would be expected.
This one might be more like thirty-five percent, because you get about ten, I'm just guessing, ten percent of road right away and street. So thirty-five percent. And you got MDOT County. And, yeah.
Now, you have, you have the graph for the one behind Hut too. Quick question, where does that drain to then when you remedy it?
You mean, when it goes down and it furthers? Just keeps going to another orphan drain. And eventually, it'll make its way to the buttermilk, way down, way to the north.
You get water in that?
Do you live back here?
No.
Oh. But that's one of them.
That's the Highland, that's the Highland Drive drainage district, we're calling that, right?
Correct. Yeah, this is, this is the Highland Drive. Does anybody live in the Highland Drive drain or river downstream? Just curious.
Not, not immediately.
Quickly, here's the other one, Hudson Trail. Everybody knows Rainbow Grill, I assume. And, um, same situation. Now, this one has a lot more MDOT in it. Um, and the outlet goes into MDOT, which, so there's two ways that I can assess property owners or municipalities or organizations. Typically, it's benefit and contribution. While this one is both for the MDOT. Not only will they be benefiting for fixing the issues over here, they're also contributing to the, to the cause. So those are the two, two-way lifestyles. If they don't contribute, if you don't benefit, I can't just assess you. So that's why you form the red line in the drain district. But anyway, we've got the same scenario. The, the blue lines are storm sewer in the road. And then you have the, yep, here's one of, it's just the infrastructure that's fallen apart back there. And this, this isn't so deep. And we have to question earlier about how deep. This one isn't so deep, but it's definitely got more structures back there. There's more outlets and it's filling up a sudden, as you can tell in that picture.
Then it'll just be dredged out and?
Correct, and then replaced and, and we can get to it by coming down meaningless, behind out by meaningless and get to it. So location is kind of okay. Sometimes these are pretty challenging locations, but this one will be okay. It's a lot of dredging and then putting it back where it was. As you can tell, this thing has been like that for a long time, these structures. This didn't happen overnight, so. And I know there was a question, well, who put this in and who reviewed this? Oh, I know, it was probably before I had the board. So that's been a few years ago. Has definitely, uh, been there a while. But, you know, the resolution and petition is just to get the process started. Um, the boarding determination is really what considers it either being a project or not. And then the cost would be something I would have portioned out down the road. And every time I do that, Patrick and I would be on the phone. He, what are your thoughts on this? I mean, it isn't just like I slapped it on there. Patrick is involved all the way through. He'll probably be here, the boarding determination will be here, and Patrick is always here. And anybody else can sit in too, by, by all means.
So that's Action Water Sports, it's the credit union, it looks like Hudsonville Trailer.
Yep.
And, um, Grand Equipment, and then the buildings where River City Flooring and?
Correct.
Medium metal buildings. So it doesn't look like Rainbow's in that.
No, Rainbow, Rainbow actually goes right in the front. So if you drive by here, actually, if you can drive by now, the leaves coming off, you'll be able to see those structures if you come down the ramp. If you look for it now, otherwise, you never see them, because you just drive right by them. But you can see them now that the leaves are coming off. But there's two of them. There's two structures and then there's a structure on the outside going to MDOT right away. That needs some repair. Nothing major, but, and again, I have seventy-five thousand high, because you have a little engineering involved. I always expect twenty-five, thirty percent higher for the unknowns. I put my contingency when I tell you guys, instead of waiting for the project and then throw the contingency in there. I'm just kind of hypothetically always going twenty-five, thirty percent. There's always issues that pop up.
Joe, does that end up in the interchange area or is that interchange area draining back south to?
It was under the highway and it actually goes into the drain.
Okay. So right, the MDOT a lot, pretty large chunk in this one.
Yep, MDOT's going to be contributing pretty good to this one.
Do they know about this yet?
Uh, this one they do. The other one, no. This one they do. I talked about this one a few years back, so MDOT and I are pretty, we do a lot of projects together. We're getting ready to do the cullwort under Buttermilk Creek Dam, under the highway, where they're starting to, we've been working with that. Those guys have been phenomenal. They always have been on every project I do. They have anything to do with it, they're always looking to help. Because they know they benefit more than anybody, especially under the highway, so.
Are there any questions for, uh, Joe?
I'm happy to answer any questions. And I know some of you know me and some of you are new, but, or somebody new like that.
Is there interest from the commission to do a little, um, field trip and walk those parcels with, uh, Joe?
I know David does, because David usually likes to.
I know, I would like to get a bit of understanding.
Just get in there.
With Joe, um, seeing those in person.
Joe, I would love to go out there with you if it works with our schedules.
Hey, absolutely.
See some more poor CMP installations, it's always fun.
Well, coming from the engineer world, and, yeah, we can go out there and evaluate it. But no, I'm happy to get anybody out there, just kind of work with Patrick and my secretary and myself, we'll get it timed, but.
Phil, the afternoon sometime, late afternoon?
The afternoon works.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make it work, whatever works for you guys.
We'll try to. Else, we'll set something up, but, um?
Okay.
And then we, we won't board on this next month, just so make sure that we fully understand it.
I don't expect the vote, it's been this way for a little bit, but?
It's been twenty years to make at least, so, um?
It's just something to get taken care of in the near future.
Finally, Joe, we really appreciate your, your attention to detail and support the city in these matters.
Oh, absolutely.
They're hidden bombs, essentially, for the city that can just, if they're not taken care of, that will haunt us.
And it's nobody's fault by any means. Sometimes they just get overlooked. They don't become a problem until it's a problem, especially in drainage.
And I think the big thing we need to understand is whether or not we want to do them both next year or we want to split it apart. And here again, I'll have to look to Patrick.
We can do it either or. I mean, we're always working with you guys on, hey, whatever works for you guys and you're comfortable.
Might be better in the bid if you did them together.
Usually, yeah. We can get a cheaper bid if you do them together. Mobilizing wants is cheaper than twice, so, especially in today's world.
But while on the budget, you can budget.
This is next, this will be next year's budget, so.
We can budget for it then, yeah.
The board of review will press over the same day as what we're saying, Joe?
The board of determination?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have them the same day, back to back.
Back to back.
And that, every, no, it'll be the same board, we'll just have two different, uh, here, a few different audiences. Yeah, they'll, we'll put one at ten and one at eleven and that way, it's cheaper for, put it in the paper. All the notifications we gotta do, I think it's expensive too, so. I like to do it one time and then have the board here one time and just get it taken care of that one time. And then I give a court recorder, just so everybody knows, for every meeting, it's not required by drain code, but since I've been elected, I, from my, since my first BOD, it's the best thing ever, is having everything court recorded, word for word. Not just for me, but for anybody, the board members, the public, especially when you're talking money, finances, drain code. You can always reference what I said, I'm okay with that.
Didn't say.
Or what I didn't say. A lot of times, we're like, I didn't say that.
Right. Any other questions for, uh, for Joe?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council has advised that we table both of these, because they're action items, so you'll need a motion to table these if you want to postpone for a month.
Very well. Phil, can you?
Can we table before they've been brought up? They're not, not in Florida yet.
We have, we have that in motion.
We were under a term, correct?
Correct. Same thing, I would have a motion, I just want to make sure.
So what, what you should do is have somebody move to table these items and then second.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion to table both items dealing with Yaddo County Water Resources Commissioner.
Move is supported, any other discussion? Is everybody clear? Jessica, we good?
Yep.
City clerk, call the roll, please.
I'm doing it just the name, so I define you back. Uh, Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Debray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup? Mayor Northrop?
Yes, thank you, Joe, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Jessica, for keeping that proper. And Patrick, I look forward to walking those with you, Joe, on that field trip, and I'll let Patrick arrange for that, and I guarantee you I've checked my mud boots.
Do you want people to wear suits?
I've been waiting for that, I didn't say anything.
I had to, I had to burn out.
Did that happen?
I'm ready for that later.
Thank you, Joe.
Anyway, thank you again. And for anybody that's served or serving in our forces, I just want to say thanks for, November eleventh is fast approaching, so thank you if any board member, or council members have served, or anybody in the audience that's served, or currently serving, so thank you. Anyway, any more questions for me? Thanks again for all your support.
Dick, are you better? Think I'm available?
Definitely a minority.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sanders, David.
Thanks, Joe, we'll, we'll, you don't need to be here next month for the vote, we, I think we got a field floor, but we'll see you out there in our mock shoes.
Okay. Nobody shows up next time, it's not my fault. You're missing a board member, too.
Very well, we will now move on to item number sixteen, the Hudsonville Farmers Co-op Property. I'll ask for the first motion on Resolution two-one-dash-one-seven-three-five.
Is this the correct motion here? I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-one-dash-seventeen-three-five approving the purchase of real property located at thirty-three oh-two Prospect Street in the city of Hudsonville, subject to financing and other contingencies.
Support.
It's been moving supportive, we've had quite a discussion on this, these properties, on this property. There's a memo in the packet, I think most of us, including the new Commissioners, have been given information. I think I provided both you, Dave and Jack, information on what we were looking at as the city commission, so I don't think there's really any surprises here, but Patrick, if you want to give us just a...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica, who's done the yeoman's work on negotiating the purchase agreement with the seller, and maybe you can just share a few highlights of that.
Sure, absolutely. So, the first step in this process was obviously to negotiate the real estate purchase agreement, which we've done, we're very happy with the outcome of those negotiations. The highlights, I think the important things to note are that you have sixty days from the date that this is fully executed, to perform your due diligence, so your environmental and title work, and also to obtain financing. And if those things aren't able to be achieved, or you don't like what you find, or you're unable to obtain financing, you can back out of the deal. So just so you know, you're not locked in. Within this real estate purchase agreement, and I don't want to jump ahead too much, but this, this does provide for an ongoing lease with the current tenant as well, so we'll get to that in the next motion. But that was the second thing that we wanted to nail down before bringing these to you, were the terms of that lease, which will allow that person, or Farmers Co-op, to stay and operate as they have been on the property for several months. So, there were two pieces to this. Other than that, this is pretty straightforward. You have some environmental due diligence to do, and you also have some financing to go negotiate with the bank now.
So at the end of sixty days, is there something else that will happen, or is it just a...
Nope, that's just the period in which you can still opt out of this, if you're not able to obtain your financing and your environmental, so. The other thing that's important to note is that this real estate purchase agreement, as well as the lease, are going to permit the city, as soon as this is executed, guarantees you the right to use this property for public parking, so.
Terror Square will be happy. One point three-five million, correct?
And, and as Jessica alluded to, there'll be some other ancillary due diligence work that will incur costs for the city, environmental being one of those. But we're gonna get going, we've already got a contractor lined up to begin that work. He's estimating that to be in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars to do a Phase One. I actually had a conversation with the prior president today, and he informed me that they had done an extensive amount of environmental cleanup work there, less than a decade ago. So he, he didn't suspect we would find anything too concerning, which was good to hear. So there's the environmental, and then the title work will have to be done. So those, those costs will be incurred above and beyond the purchase price of the property. Just wanted to make that known.
There's a motion on the table, any questions from the Commissioners, for Jessica or Patrick? So we're all clear? Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Devery?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes, moving on to the second motion to adopt Resolution number two-one-dash-one-seven-three-six. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number two-one-dash-one-seven-three-six, authorizing the mayor to execute the attached lease agreement between the city of Hudsonville and Farmers Co-op Cooperative Elevator Co., Company, and substantially the form drafted, contingent upon purchase of the property.
Support.
Some move is supported, Jessica, Patrick, do you want to write an update?
Jessica, you want to talk about the lease agreement a little bit?
Sure, so again, just the lease agreement, it was actually referenced within the real estate purchase agreement, sort of vaguely referenced, and so we wanted to lock down those terms before you entered into this purchase agreement. The highlights are that the current tenant, the seller, is allowed to stay and operate as they have been until March thirty-first, possibly longer, a few months longer. They have to pay the city five thousand five hundred dollars a month to be there. If anything breaks down, essentially, no repairs are required, because at that point we'll just terminate the lease and they'll have to move. There's no point in investing more in the current infrastructure there. And again, they have to permit the, the city to use it for public parking, so.
They're paying all utilities?
Paying all utilities. And again, the seller just has asked for this because they're moving to a new property, and they need a place to be until that piece is ready.
Do we pay property tax?
They'll, they'll pay everything, all of those costs will be passed to them.
Until closing.
Until closing, right.
One other related note is there's another, I'll call it a sub-letter on the property, and that's the...
Insurance?
Farm Bureau.
Yeah.
Farm Bureau Insurance Agent, John Van Thorpe, he's paying a pretty minor monthly payment, I believe it's three or four hundred dollars a month to the Co-op. That's something we'll have to deal with separately, once we take control of the property. We'll reach out to Mr. Van Thorpe and make him aware of the situation and see what he wants to do, but if need be, we'll have to maybe do another separate lease agreement with him, depending on...
Right, right.
How long he would like to stay, so. But it's not part of this, because the main portion was to get the Co-op locked in.
Does his lease carry, is, his lease is active as long as the Co-op is leasing?
It's a handshake agreement.
There's nothing in writing for that one. It's just sort of a month-to-month situation.
We're just assuming the same lease.
Yeah.
So it's the building there, or is just parking that he's paying for, or what?
He's, he's in a building there, yeah, the brick building right next to the corner of the chiropractor.
I know there were some paragraphs about liability from the seller's standpoint, but how does that carry over into the insurance agency? Are they, are we released from any liability of stuff that happens on his property too?
Yes, yes. They'll be responsible, I mean, they will be conducting the same activities, they have been using their, their equipment that they've used this whole time, so, so they'll be responsible for anything that happens for the next few months.
So our risk factor is basically zero?
It is, yeah. And actually, Commissioner Lear just pointed out, this motion is worded such that it authorizes the mayor to execute the lease agreement, but actually, I think usually you authorize the city manager to do that. Is that correct, or does it...
It's, it's typically the mayor, if that's okay, yeah.
That's absolutely fine, just wanted to make sure you had that flexibility, so.
Patrick, is the vintage clothing building part of it as well?
No, that's not, that's on a different property.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission? City Treasurer, we're good for the money here?
We'll see what kind of offers we get. I do have the RFP that will probably go out tomorrow, so I'll deliver it to the banks, and we'll see what rates we can get.
Has there been any preliminary conversation with lending institutions on that?
We talked with West Michigan Community Bank at first, super preliminary, we didn't even know what we were gonna do with it, so I think it's gonna be a fresh start, go to every single bank, see who was most competitive, and...
You've had some conversations, haven't you, Jessica?
We have, and we actually have some banks that our clients work with on a regular basis, so we have a list of banks that we'll give to Kayla and Patrick, and they could start there, so. Rates are very good right now, so we're optimistic. This has to be done in sort of an unusual format, which I can go into more detail, actually, when we get to motion number three, yep.
Very good, well, there's a motion on the floor, any other questions? Call the roll, please, Kirk.
Commissioner Devery?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes, moving on to motion to authorize Resolution number twenty-one-dash-one-seven-three-seven. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize Resolution number twenty-one-dash-one-seven-three-seven, authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of financing the purchase of real property located at three-three-zero-two Prospect Street in the city of Hudsonville.
Support.
Some move is supported, Jessica, I guess I'll turn it over to you again.
All right, so this is a little bit unusual, instead of just being able to go to a bank and get a commercial loan, a municipality has to go through this process. And so, in this situation, the best process for you to follow is the one provided by Act ninety-nine. And what it does is it authorizes you to go to banks and enter into an installment purchase agreement with them, which for all practical purposes is a loan. So this authorizes the mayor and the city manager and the finance director and the clerk to authorize, or to, to execute any documentation that needs to be executed within these parameters in order to get this financing accomplished. So this will not even have to come back to you, as long as they stay within these parameters. So I did give Kayla a draft, and I'll work with her to fill out the details tomorrow of a request for proposal, and she'll take this around to the various banks with the parameters listed, and see what kind of bids, you're essentially going up for bids, to see what kind of interest rates you'll get.
So how long would that loan be? I mean, it could be a month, it could be six months, it could be six years, so what, do we lock in a rate for that full amount then, for...
We would certainly, we'll see what they come back with. So in the parameters resolution, let's go through that for a minute. We actually talk about that, and we have in here a principal amount outstanding of not to exceed five percent annually. We do not anticipate that the interest rate will be anywhere near that high, but we always go high in these types of resolutions. So we expect it to be quite a bit lower than that. And then we put a duration with a final maturity of not more than four years. Again, I think that Patrick and Kayla hope to be a lot shorter than that, so we can put what we really want in the RFP tomorrow, so whether that's two years or however long you think you need to pay something back. And then I believe you're looking for an interest-only loan. And the other thing is that we've determined that, under the circumstances, since you will be allowing them to stay, and there will be private use of the property, you should really probably do this as a taxable installment purchase agreement. In order to do it as a tax-exempt installment purchase agreement, there could not be any private use on the property, because they're gonna be there for a while, paying you rent, we can do this deal as a taxable deal. The taxable interest rates right now are very similar to tax-exempt rates, with a lot less paperwork, so it's actually to your advantage and a lot simpler to do it that way. So that would be our recommendation. With this type of financing, you do not have to do, there's no right of referendum or anything like that, it's a very simple, straightforward type of municipal financing.
So, Patrick, how will the city commission know that we've carried out...
Yeah, one question I had, and for Jessica, I guess, was when, when we did talk to West Michigan Bank about this, they indicated that, that they would likely require some type of an equity down payment of ten percent, or ten or twenty percent, do you remember, Kayla, what they said?
I can't remember.
But it was, I mean, it's a, on one point three-five, it's a significant amount. Is that something that we would need to come back, or is that something that we can put into this where we would require no money down, or is that unlikely that we would receive a, a fair bid on that if we had that kind of a stipulation? Because that's something I feel like the commission should authorize, because those will be coming out of our general fund dollars, unbudgeted monies for down payment. Again, going back to my memo, our goal is to get this back in the hands of a developer as quickly as possible, so in, in conjunction with this process, we're working on the backend to put together a request for interest that we're gonna send out to developers in West Michigan. We've already got one that's expressed a lot of interest, and try to get this, this property back in the hands of private ownership soon, but there is costs that we're going to incur while we hold it and to acquire it. And I guess that was my question, is if there is a requirement for a down payment of a significant amount, do I come back to the commission on that? Which we could potentially do that in December before we close on this property.
Right, right, so this is so broadly worded that this would actually cover you, to do that without coming back.
Okay.
But there's no harm in coming back, I would certainly think that your commission would want an update on things, so.
We need the update, okay.
This just lets you get, get the job done as quickly as possible without coming back, until you're completely ready to, to report.
We need to know what we're getting into.
Yep. The reason for sort of the rush on this is because the seller wants to close by the end of the year.
I can understand.
So.
Any other questions for Jessica or Patrick and the Commissioners? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Devery?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes, thank you, Jessica, you've done a lot of work on this, appreciate your attention detail in keeping us legally safe. And Patrick, your foresight to, to move ahead on this, it was a big piece you bit, but you did it for the right reason, and thank you.
We're excited, we're gonna hopefully come back with some, some great concepts shortly.
Very good, moving on to appointments to boards and Commissioners and Commissions, is there a motion to approve the mayor's appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed.
I second the motion.
Been moving supported, I won't go through these, but I have spoken to all the Commissioners on all these assignments. I think this was the best we could do with the current makeup, I think that we've danced a few things and moved a few people around, but I think it's, it's a very balanced assignments to these boards and commissions. Larry, I'm looking forward to having you on the Planning Commission, how you avoided it all those years, now is the time to, for you to show up to a long Planning Commission, so, thank you very much. Any questions or discussion on the, the boards or commissions?
I have a question, this doesn't list everybody.
This is not, this is not the complete list, this is the list, Jess, Jill, these are just ones that were open and then moved, so the old list is still the same.
I will send out an updated list.
I think it'd be helpful to have a complete updated list.
We will. There are still a couple openings, we need a resident for the Planning Commission still, and the ZBA is, I think, and the Board of You are still the same, I believe.
Yeah, there's some openings.
Okay, we still need to work through, but these are the important ones. Any other questions for the Commission on these assignments, boards? Any other questions for the commission on these, uh, assignments, boards? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Devery?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we'll go down the dais, uh, and after we adjourn, we will take a photo, and I'll lead off with you, Tobin, uh, nice tie.
Thank you. I picked it up for you.
You have anything to add?
No, I don't.
We'll see you at the parade?
Excuse me?
We will see you at the parade?
Uh, I might be up north deer hunting.
We'll see you at the Christmas, at the Christmas tree lighting?
What does the street lighting remind me?
December two, I think.
Yeah, I'll be up for that, for sure.
And then there is a holiday city employee appreciation dinner, which is December third. We'll see you there, right?
Hundred percent.
With or without your tie?
Let's just leave it a surprise mark.
Okay, leave, leave the dress at home, thank you, Dave, you have anything to add?
No, grateful to be part of the group.
Okay, the banter is typically not quite so, anyway, we'll drop it.
Except for Tobin.
Phil?
Welcome to the new people, I'm thankful for Gary's service and Greg's, both good, good people, and this event on the third, that is an employee appreciation?
Service appreciation dinner.
Okay.
Email came up today.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I didn't see that.
It's, it's all, um, boards and commissions.
Gotcha.
December three, I believe, isn't it?
Okay.
It's Caribbean theme, so you can wear your Caribbean.
You can wear a Caribbean tie?
Dress-up parties, are you saying?
Straw skirt, thank you, Jessica, you have anything you wanna? Good to have you here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Uh, there's a card floating around for Dick Went, um, we didn't get an opportunity to give him a card at the, his retirement party, which was very well attended, it was amazing, the impact he has had on West Michigan communities and development, um, so we're very fortunate to have him serving Hudsonville for so many years, we're gonna miss him, um, very thankful to have Jessica, and I'm appreciative of everything she's been doing with us on this project, um, just a reminder on the parade, for those of you who have not, um, done that before, um, the city has a float that, um, uh, we pull behind a city vehicle, and typically the city commissioners will walk alongside of that float and hand out candy, so, um, do we have them chief park here sometime still and drive over, is that how that works?
Yeah, we, we would drive, well.
Okay, so if you want to come here the morning, if you're planning on partaking.
We're here by nine-thirty, is that okay, chief? Okay.
That'd be great.
What day is that, Patrick?
Uh, that's sad, the twentieth, Saturday of the twentieth, the, it's always a Saturday before Thanksgiving.
Ten days.
So, um, we talked about the, um, Christmas tree lighting, we talked about the parade, and then the strategic plan retreat, just a reminder on that, hopefully you all have that on your calendars, that is December.
Nineteenth, is it, no, December.
It's coat and tie, Kobe.
That's eleven.
Eleven.
December eleven. Yes, eight-thirty AM at the Grand Ravines Lodge, so, I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you, Patrick, Larry?
Just like to welcome the new members, look forward to working with you. Jeff? Ran a fierce campaign. Took all the votes.
He only went negative a couple times, so I'm proud of you.
Glad to be here, glad to serve, thank you.
Kayla?
No, I, we'll be talking a lot in between, um, but yeah, if you guys have questions or want something specific from the audit presentation, let me know, and I can pass that on.
Jill?
Yes, um, I put meeting attendance sheets at your places, um, you can fill them out every month, once a quarter, it's totally up to you, um.
And why do we do this?
So that you can get paid, so, if you don't turn it in, you don't get paid, I'm sorry.
And it's still for meetings where you're not present, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Anything else?
I, I do have another thing.
Go ahead, Jill.
Um, your mailboxes were moved around today, so, except for Tobin's.
The tall one should be on top.
He is.
Okay. And Phil?
What's the issue?
I will ask for a motion to adjourn, Phil?
I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moving supported, we are adjourned.